Thirty seconds is good. Sorry, gentlemen.
You are okay.
Number one.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I'd like to call the USD 305 Board meeting to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
No, Madam President.
Okay, wouldn't anyone like to make a motion? Marian?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, I have a motion. Wouldn't you like to second that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Seven zero. Recognizations and presentations, starting with our You Make a Difference Award.
Good evening. The You Make a Difference Award is presented to staff members whose exemplary actions support students, colleagues, and the mission of Salina Public Schools. Recipients of these awards receive a lapel pin and a handwritten note personally delivered by a Board of Education member. Nancy Williams, Lakewood Middle School art teacher. Above and beyond her own work responsibilities, Nancy stepped in to assist substitute teachers during a long term of absence of a colleague. She contacted parents and assisted with classroom management and lessons. Thank you, Nancy. Denise Bennett, South High School, financial secretary. Upon qualifying for regional competition, the Salinas South robotics team was pressed to obtain supplies needed to rebuild aspects of their robot. Denise not only ordered supplies but followed up with emails and phone calls, happily going the extra mile to support teacher and student success. Thank you, Denise. Cynthia Mailer, Stewart Elementary substitute teacher. As a substitute teacher, Cynthia's adaptability is much appreciated. When a teacher had to go home midday, she willingly switched her subposition to help out. Thank you, Cynthia, for making a difference. Susan Burchill, Oakdale Elementary Special Education teacher. Susan's problem solving and creativity improved the bathroom climate for Oakdale students in grades three through five. She created an incentive program that addressed a problem and positively engaged the students. Thank you, Susan. Now we'll move to our Superintendent's Excellence Awards with Mr. Hall. Our first group of awards goes to the four band state qualifiers who made it into the All-State Band Orchestra at South High School. Darren Brooks is the South High Band Director. Mary Wagner, Assistant Director, joins us this evening. The students are very busy preparing for Thoroughly Modern Millie at South High School this weekend, so we're going to go ahead and recognize them by reading their names. Allstate Band, Ryan Davis, Senior Trumpet. Miranda Urban, Senior Horn. Derek Lemar, Junior, Mallet Percussion. State Orchestra, Trevor Harrington, Junior Percussion. Thank you. Our next group of awards goes to choir state qualifiers at South High School. Eddie Creer, Junior, is the Vocal Music Director. Will all the music students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? Congratulations to the following students who were selected to the KMEA Allstate Middle Level Choir. They will perform for the Kansas Music Educator Associations in Service Workshop on February 23rd. Allstate Middle Level Choir, Santiago Vasquez, Freshman. Amaya Dungen, Freshman. Courtney White, Freshman. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Thank you for keeping your tradition alive.
Next, we recognize choir state qualifiers at Central High School. Ryan Holmquist is the Vocal Music Director. Will all the music students please line up next to Mr. Hall and Mr. Holmquist? Congratulations to the following students who were selected to the KMEA 2017 Allstate Honor Choir. They will perform at the Kansas Music Educators Association Convention on February 25th. Allstate High School Honor Choir, Ethan Betters, Senior. This is the second consecutive year Ethan has made it into the Allstate Choir. Maria Putzer, Senior. Gage Burmaster, Sophomore. Brayden Holtberg, Sophomore. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now. Our next group of awards goes to theater state qualifiers at South High School. Kate Lindsay is the South High Theater Director, and she and her students are at their dress rehearsal for Thoroughly Modern Millie this evening. Salinas South's thespian troupe received several honors at the 2017 Kansas State thespian Festival. They once again received a Gold Honor Troop Award. Sophie Flores, Senior Drama Club President, and Katie Zirker, Senior Vice President, put together the application book, and Sophie presented it during the Honor Troop interview. Sophie and Nathan Zimmerman, Junior, served as state board members helping to organize and run the conference. Sophie also received a $1,000 Kansas thespian performance scholarship. Nick Salem, Junior, worked throughout the festival and was selected as a state thespian officer. Sophie Flores and Nick Salem received superior ratings on their individual event in solo musical theater, which qualifies them to perform at the International thespian Festival this summer. Anthony Nipopa, Junior, and Addison Preiter, Junior, both received excellent ratings. During the late night activities, the speed charades team placed third. They are Noah Endreschek, Junior, Andrew Golseth, Senior, Albany Garcia, Junior, Michaela Robyn, Senior, Cameron Monk, Senior, and Brendan Larson, Senior. The creative costumes team placed first. They are Logan Kitchner, Senior, C.C. Darville, Senior, Sophie Flores, and Katie Zirker. Another creative costumes team placed second, and they are Miranda Urban, Senior, Patricia Hall, Senior, Quinn Monk, Senior, Bailey Holtgren, Junior, Mason Leatherman, Sophomore, won the drawing for the free registration to next year's festival. Congratulations to these students. We now recognize theater state qualifiers at Central High School. Chad Newlick is the Central High Theater Director. Will all the theater students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? Salinas Central's The Fox and the Fairway was selected as one of 11 shows throughout the nation to perform at International thespian Festival in June in Lincoln, Nebraska. Cast and crew are Ethan Betters, Senior. Jordan Bottom, Senior. Riley Rundell, Senior. Samuel Lenkowitz, Junior. Carolyn Gutsch, Junior. William Hayes, Junior. Sarah Hazelton, Junior. Annie Taggart, Sophomore. Audrey Bergoon, Sophomore. Brayden Holtberg, Sophomore. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
We're not going to let you get away.
Our next group of awards goes to debate state qualifiers at South High School. The South High Debate Team is coached by Megan Hegeman. Will all debate students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? The following students qualified for the state debate tournament. Logan Fricks, Senior. Santiago Vasquez, Freshman. Alvaro Escobedo, Senior. Alvaro also attended the Kansas Debate Classic. Tyler Ross, Senior. Assi Malau, Junior. Haley Householder, Junior. Michaela Nixon, Senior. Andres Mata, Senior. Tyler and Alvaro also attended the Kansas Debate Classic. This requires a 70% win-loss record at varsity tournaments and is a throwdown of the best teams across all KSHSA classifications. Navistate is a tournament that mirrors the qualification process for varsity state but is reserved for first-year competitors. Four teams qualified and attended that competition. Jacob Sweet, Freshman. Brandon Stewart, Freshman. Madeline Lilak, Freshman. Aleah Roberts, Freshman. Madison Hamilton, Freshman. Ashley Scott, Freshman. Gavin Jones, Freshman. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Keep arguing. Congratulations.
Our next award goes to art state qualifier at South High School. The South High art teachers are Kurt Wolf and Jessica Harris. I invite Ulysses Salas to the front. Congratulations to Ulysses Salas, Senior, who received juried entry and awards from the prestigious 2017 Kansas Scholastic Art and Writing Competition. His work will be on display at the Wichita Center for the Arts for the month of February and closes with the award ceremony on March 6th. Ulysses Salas received a Silver Key on his drawing and illustration, "The Look." Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you. Our last group of awards goes to art state qualifiers at Central High School. The Central High art teachers are Larry Collins and Kirsten Dykes. Will all art students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsors? Eleven Central High School students were represented with 13 pieces of artwork, honored and accepted into the prestigious 2017 Kansas Regional Scholastic Art Awards exhibit. Gold and Silver Key National Competition honorees, artwork demonstrating the highest levels of originality, technique, and personal vision. Shayla Williams, Senior. Shayla received a Silver Key for excellence on her acrylic painting titled "Bad Meat." Ruben Esparza, Junior, received a Silver Key on his oil painting titled "Dusk" and an honorable mention on a ceramic piece. Tori Emel, Junior, received a Silver Key on her clay sculpture titled "In the Womb." Israel Torres, Freshman, received a Silver Key on his ink drawing titled "Aged." Amaya Svenblad, Freshman, received a Silver Key on her ink drawing titled "Downtown." The following art students were presented with honorable mentions. Maria Garcia, Senior, received two honorable mentions. Sophia Justice, Senior. Keegan Englund, Senior. Brianna Weiss, Senior. Elijah Cairo, Junior. Adrian Santos, Junior. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Moving on in our agenda to our consent agenda items, we'll start with the minutes of the January 10th, 2017 regular meeting, the minutes of our January 19th, 2017 special meeting, the minutes of the January 24th, 2017 special meeting, minutes of the January 24th, 2017 special meeting, our personnel reports, our financial reports, including our January bills list and our January bond bills list, our December Treasuries Report, December Investment Report, December Journal entries, the Bond Budget Summary, Professional Development for Individual Development Plans, College Credit, Building Staff Development Plans, and District Staff Development Plans. We're approving our encumbrance listings to McCown Gordon Construction in the amount of $153,656 for the replacement of an in-ground water service lines at South High School. We're approving high school football uniforms bids for Central High School to lose sporting goods in the amount of $28,640. We're approving high school football uniforms for South High School to East Bay in the amount of $30,268.96. We're approving our audit contract with Varney and Associates CPAs in the amount of $20,300 for the end, I'm assuming for the year ending June 30th, 2017. We're approving acceptance of donation from Community Corrections in the amount of $5,499 to send staff to a training provided by the International Institute of Restorative Practices. We're approving Kansas Early Head Start Child Care Partnership Grant application in the amount of $538,000, I'm sorry, $538,050. We're approving Kansas Early Head Start Home Visitation Grant application in the amount of $220,000.
Yeah, Madam President, I had a couple of questions about a few things that are on those consent agenda items, and it's just curiosity here. Jeff Hayes was here just a minute ago, but he seems to have disappeared.
Recognizing his child.
At any rate, his name is on our personnel list, and I see that he will be leaving Opportunity Now, where he has been an absolutely outstanding administrator. And I'm assuming he's taking Rhonda Bird's place?
Yes, he is.
At CKCIE.
Yes, he is.
Okay. And we're in the process, then, of looking for someone else to fill his rather large shoes at Opportunity Now. He's done a really great job over there, and I think we all need to recognize that. On the water line going to South High, this is probably Chris's bailiwick, it's absolutely reasonable to have McCown Gordon do this work as a part of the construction, the new construction at South High. I just wondered whether or not the price on this, for what they're offering to do it offering, I use the word loosely, what they're going to charge us for doing it, is comparable to what it would have been had we taken bids?
Ma'am, we actually did take bids for three separate subcontractors, and the subcontractor that won is actually a local subcontractor.
Okay, okay. Cost of jerseys, South and Central, $368, South jerseys as opposed, well, uniforms as opposed to $390 for Central High School, and South cost more, was it the color?
Well, making his way, making his way to the mic is Mr. Tin Stonebreaker.
I've been wanting to talk to you, Mrs. Brander, for a while, man.
Have at it, sir.
The difference is, on our football uniform, we have different striping. Central doesn't have any striping on their jerseys.
Okay.
And so what happens is the unit cost of the jersey is a little bit more for ours because of the striping. Greg and I both looked at our numbers for the next year and kind of our history of our numbers, and we had ordered 90 the previous cycle, didn't feel like we needed to go there.
Right.
So because our cost was a little bit higher, we went down to 84. Greg's numbers, he felt like he still needed to go 90, so that's why that reflects that, the unit cost of the jersey. The jersey's actually the same jersey, but we have
Looks like it.
Yeah, we have striping on the jersey that causes ours to be more, and then when you buy, like you said, 300 and whatever number that is, that's why it adds up the way it does.
Thanks very much, appreciate that information, sir. And then a couple of things relative to district professional development plans that intrigue me. One was a visit by six individuals to Adley Stevenson High School, and I wondered who and why.
Where is that?
I'm sorry?
I'm just curious where it is.
Adley Stevenson High School is in Lincolnshire, Illinois, and that is the high school that Rick DeFour, who is well-known, he just passed away here in the last few days, but he is well-known for his work in professional learning communities and extreme gains in student performance as a result of that collaborative culture that he has built. We have been working on trying to get professional learning communities strongly in place in our district for several years, and what I did was I took my school improvement team so that we could look at what they were doing on assessment, because interestingly enough, they are working on proficiency scales, which is what we're doing, identifying priority standards, which is what we're doing. They've got their professional learning communities in place, and they're looking at data like we are doing here locally, and they are doing standards referenced grading at the high school level. And so many of the initiatives that we have in place here, they're out in front of us, and we just wanted to see how that was working. Mr. Stevens also has taken a small group up there and has been engaging in conversations at South High regarding what they learned and how that might look and inform what we're doing. And so it really was just kind of an exploration of somebody that is 20 years ahead of us in terms of implementation to learn from folks in the field.
Very good, thank you so much. The other one that interested me was because of the name, it was called Trauma in Informed Programming, and I wondered whether that was for nursing or computers. What kind of trauma?
Actually, that was sponsored by CKCIE, and it was on January 2nd, and we had a group of individuals go from both CKCIE and then also USD 305 counselors and social workers were invited. And really, the trauma piece of that is the fact that many of our students have experienced things in their lives that have almost rewired their brains, and so how they respond to stressful situations and basically when they're in school, sometimes the strategies you need to use with those young individuals is different than what we might use for other students. And so it was really a way for us to fully understand some of the new research that's out there about the brain-based, how the brain works when it goes into the fight or flight situation.
And we had 60-some participants in that, is that correct? Like 68 or so? That's really great, I think that's important. And the one other piece on that was how will staff members be chosen for that restorative justice conference and what will be their responsibilities upon their return, since restorative justice is one of the focuses that the district's moving toward.
We have a committee in the district that's made up of several administrators from all different levels, and what we're going to, actually, we go to Wichita West on Friday to visit their school because they're kind of one of the premier schools in this area that's using restorative practices and restorative justice within their school. That committee will, after we visit on Friday, will talk through who would be the best individuals to allow us to help implement that across our district, and it really is to support some of the other things we're doing with positive behavior supports and also some of the work that we've already done with Dr. Sprick on district and building wide incentives.
Okeydoke, thank you very much. I was just curious about all those things and thought it would be something we might want to talk about.
Any additional discussion, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items as read.
Madam President, I move that we accept the consent agenda items as read.
Okay, and did you want to second that? Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our public forum, if anybody would like to address the board now, would be your time. Seeing no one rushing up, we'll move on to our action agenda items, starting with our South High New Dawn Out-of-State Field Trip with Mr. Creer.
Good evening. The New Dawn Singers is the premier singing group at Salinas High School South, and it's been there as long as the school's been open. And they're all required, except for extending circumstances, to be in another choir, and the reason why is that the New Dawn Singers, their main focus is performance. We get in there and we pass out the music and we work on performing. And so therefore, a lot of the technique things, the reason why I have them in another choir is that some of the things that we work on as far as our technique and music literacy and musicianship is done at another time. We just focus on performing. And so we like to do as part of our maybe kind of rotation every couple of years, take them on an out-of-state performance trip. I like I like to say that we, when we go on our trips, we don't go to an amusement park or anything like that. We go, we find things that we can do culturally and we perform. And the proposal is that while we're in New Orleans, that we would perform four times. In the past, I used to do it during the school year, and we would hook up with some other festivals at that time, and I have some trophies in my room from San Francisco, Chicago, St. Louis, and Dallas and things like that, but it's become so much, the schedule is so packed that I now do it after school's out, and there aren't any festivals at that time. So one of our performances is at a university under a festival-type environment where we'll have a professor there and he'll critique us as if it were like a festival, there won't be any trophy at stake or anything like that. Yes?
Are any of your performances already scheduled?
Yes.
And are any of them going to be adjudicated?
No. I, well, the one's gonna, one's gonna be adjudicated. I, I, that's what I meant, is like, it's at a university, one of the professors, it'll be adjudicated, but it's not part of a music festival.
Right.
So we will get adjudication, but we won't, there's nothing at stake as far as winning a trophy or anything like that.
But it's still a learning experience.
Yes, it will be.
And what university is that?
I think it's Tulane.
Tulane?
Uh-huh.
It's a good school?
Yeah.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion on this? Ann?
I move that we approve the South High New Dawn Trip to New Orleans, Louisiana, on May 22 through 25, 2017, as presented.
Okay, it's 19 through 24th, is it? Maybe it's changed since then, I'm sorry, is that a problem?
Okay, let me revise.
Okay.
I move that we approve the New Dawn, South High New Dawn Trip to New Orleans on May 19th to 24th, 2017, as presented.
All right. Would anyone like to second that? Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Have a good time.
Thank you.
Moving on in our action agenda item to the 17-18 school calendar?
Yes, Madam President, and this is somewhat of a formality, we convene the calendar committee annually and, and look at really our calendar, school calendars, two years out. We look at the one obviously for the upcoming school year, and then we also look at the one for two years out. The first item that I'd like to visit with the board about is the proposed 2017-18 school calendar. Usually, when we have a tentative calendar and it comes back to the board the following year, very seldom do we make changes. However, this year was an exception. I had a number of folks contacting me representing the Tri Rivers Fair, and it came to my attention that the Tri Rivers Fair is actually starting the same week that we had school starting originally. We had planned on starting school August 10th, I believe the Tri Rivers Fair starts August 8th, so there were some concerns about the number of students who were children, kids, families, who could, who could attend the Tri Rivers Fair or even participate in the Tri Rivers Fair if they were involved in school. So in visiting with the calendar committee, I shared that with them, and they were willing to kind of look at maybe revising that, starting school a little bit later, the following week. And so as a result of that, we're asking, asking the board to approve a calendar in which the teacher start day will, will move from August 4th to August 8th, so we'll back that up about four days. The start of classes then would move from August 10th to August 14th, which would be that Monday. So the first full week of school would be, would start on a Monday. And then the last day for students would be, would move it to, from May 16th to May 18th, the last day for teachers from May 17th to May 21st. Essentially, what we had to do is add two days somewhere in the calendar to make that happen. Gave the calendar committee a choice of either adding a day or taking a day away from the winter break and maybe adding a day on the back end, and they really didn't want to take any time away from the winter break, so they just were more comfortable just adding two days to the end of the school year. It will require teachers to come back for a workday on a Monday. So the last day of school for students would be on Friday, teachers would have to come back for a workday on the Monday, but they were absolutely fine with that. The calendar committee is made up of administrators, Board of Education members, we also have teachers who are also represented on that committee as well. So with that in mind, unless there's questions, I would recommend to the board that you approve the proposed calendar for 2017-2018.
Uh, Marion?
I move that we approve the 2017-2018 school calendar as presented, and it will have 178 contact days and 188 contract days.
All right, I have a motion, would anyone like to second that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to the tentative 18-19 school calendar.
And then, yes, Madam President, as you reviewed the tentative calendar, you'll see that it is very, very similar to the, to the calendar that the board just approved for 17-18. Again, we, we looked ahead and to see when the Tri Rivers Fair was going to start, it also is going to be a conflict, had we gone back to where we normally start. So once again, we're asking that we move that back and start the Monday, which I think would be the second full week in August, and so it's going to be very, very similar to the, to the proposed calendar that the board just approved. So I would recommend that you approve the 18-19 calendar. Again, it is tentative, so if there are any changes, we would come back to the board next year and, and request some changes be made at that time.
All right. Would anyone like to make that motion? Nadra?
I move that we approve the tentative calendar for the 2018-2019 school year as presented, 178 school contact days and 188 contract days.
All right, would anyone like to make a second? Oh, Marion, thank you.
I seconded.
Okay.
And I would also like to say that I think it really behooves us to be in good graces with the Fair Board.
Absolutely. All right, any additional discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to our discussion agenda items, starting with the ACT Aspire.
As Ms. Exine's making way to the mic, each of you should have a copy of the PowerPoint that she will be referring to minimized on your desktop. You want to go ahead and pull that up?
I am here tonight with a recommendation that we replace our current standardized assessment, which is the NWEA MAP assessment, with the ACT Aspire. And so I want to give you a little bit of background information on the ACT Aspire, tell you about what we're looking for in assessment, in the assessment, and then also talk a little bit about the process that we used to come to this recommendation. We have been talking in the state of Kansas for several years about college career readiness, and we've been, you know, that's been in our mission statement here in USD 305 as well. Our USD 305 strategic plan actually states that all students will graduate from high school ready to enter the workforce or an institution of higher learning. There is a new KSDE outcome of post-secondary attendance or attainment that will be part of our accreditation when the KISA accreditation model begins. In addition, we have the need for program evaluation in our district at certain times, and having a standardized assessment helps us be able to look at the programming that we're offering and make sure that our curriculum is providing students what they need. In addition, we really do need to be measuring, a measure to monitor academic progress towards that college and career readiness all along the way, rather than waiting until students are in high school. And then the other, the other thing that we really discussed is we need a consistent standardized assessment in grades three through 10. We currently have the MAP assessment at grades one through eight, and then at ninth grade, we switch to the ACT Aspire. And so having a consistent assessment, we feel like will better help us look at what's happening in our K-12 program. When we talk about college career readiness, what, how that is defined at the state level is that a student has acquired the knowledge and skills to walk into credit-bearing coursework at a post-secondary institution, and that, that would include a two-year, a four-year, or a trade school. What that means is a student would not need to pay to take remedial coursework that would not count toward some kind of degree. Any more college readiness is the same as career readiness, and while not every high school graduate is going to go on to a post-secondary institution, there is research that shows that the level of skill that students need when they walk out of our doors to get a, a job that will allow upward mobility and the student to actually support a family of four above the poverty line, the level of skill for that and the level of skill to enter credit-bearing work is the same. There's a high convergence there. And so there is no longer a difference, when our kids walk out, they really need to have the math and the science and the writing and the reading skills that are at that same level that you would need to enter credit-bearing coursework if we want them to be able to contribute in the post-secondary world. There was a study by the American Diploma Project, that last slide was actually ACT. The American Diploma Project, this is ACHIEVE, they also looked at much employment data over time, they looked at educator input from post-secondary and from high school, and they looked at frontline manager input to try to substantiate that that college readiness equals career readiness. And what they are saying in Ready or Not by the American Diploma Project is that the English and math that graduates have to master to succeed in those college, in those credit-bearing college courses, and high-performance, high-growth jobs are the same. That is why we really need a college-career-ready assessment in place, and we need to be measuring progress toward that all along the way. An earlier measure is needed. Here's what we know. We know that the level of academic achievement that a student has prior to entering high school has more impact on their college-career readiness than anything that happens in high school. And the reason is, if they aren't ready when they walk in high school, they can't take advantage of those more rigorous courses. So increasing rigor at the high school just is not enough. We have to make sure that kids come in ready to benefit from those rigorous courses. So this really is a K-12 issue. So why ACT Aspire? ACT is, is the college readiness benchmark that most students know and understand, most families know and understand, and it gives us a good indication of post-secondary readiness. If a student scores an 18 in English, a 22 in math, a 22 in reading, a 23 in science, they have a 50% chance of a B or better in that entry-level course, a 75% chance of a C or better. And like we just said, that means that they are ready for whatever post-secondary opportunity that they want to pursue. The ACT Aspire also has a STEM score built in, and that STEM score of a 26 would predict a student's success in an entry-level class in mathematics and science above the biology and algebra. So if a student entered to Calc, then this also has a predictive score for that as well. So the process that we used, we started with an administrative assessment committee and had discussions about what are, what are we looking for in an assessment? We do have a board policy, I think it's II, that talks about that we need to have this balance of assessments, we need to have a standardized assessment, we need to have Kansas assessments, we need to have classroom assessments. And so having something that is an outside measure is important to us. We, that committee actually talked about making sure that we have something that bridges that K-12 span, making sure that we have something that shows student growth over time, looking at some, a test that's comparable over grades. With the Kansas assessment, we can compare fourth graders to fourth graders, but the fourth grade assessment is not really comparable to the fifth grade assessment. With this scaled score, it is. We can look at performance, how much does a student grow in fourth grade, how much did a student grow in fifth grade? And it's important for us to know, are we getting a year's worth of growth each year? We wanted something we could use for academic advising, and as we're moving to individual plans of study, it is really important that we're able to say to a student, here's where we need to bolster your skills so that you're ready for that post-secondary opportunity that you're pursuing. We wanted something that was meaningful to parents and students, and then we wanted that consistent measure. So we, after we talked about that in our small committee, the administrators that were at the table, and it was two elementary principals, two middle school principals, and the two high school principals, said, we really want for all administrators to engage in this discussion. So I went ahead and I met with the rest of the administrative staff, had a similar discussion, and then I asked all the administrators to go out, talk to your faculty, talk to your leadership teams especially, and engage in conversations with those teacher leaders about what impact would this have on you, how are you using the MAP data right now, what do we need to consider as we would make this change if it's approved by the board? So we identified the concerns and supports needed. Most of those were related to change management, just a new assessment, how do I use the results, that kind of concern. And then the committee got back together, we considered that input, and we decided, you know what, we really can go ahead and propose the adoption of ACT Aspire. So the committee recommendation, and this is a little different than what we've done before. In the past, we have used, we've used the MAP at grades one through eight, and everybody took the same assessment. That is not our recommendation to you. We are, we're wanting to lessen the testing footprint, lessen the time spent testing, but make sure that we have the information that we need to make decisions. And so our recommendation is that we would adopt the summative assessment, which is all four subject areas at certain grades, and the periodic or interim assessments that are shorter in just math and reading at some grades, okay? So that summative assessment would give us a score for text complexity and STEM, would also give us the English, math, reading, and science scores similar to the ACT. We would, we would propose to give that at grades three, six, nine, and 10, and that assessment takes 230 to 245 minutes. That's one of the reasons we didn't want to give it at every grade level. Why grades three, six, nine, 10? Here's our thinking. At third grade, that's the first time this is, this assessment is available, that's when the switch and kids, is when kids really start to use reading to learn. And at third grade, it would give us a nice measure of what was happening K-2. Then at sixth grade, in the fall, it would give us a nice measure of what's happening three, five, so that we can identify where, if we have curricular issues, where are they so that we can address those. Ninth grade would give us a good measure of middle school, what's happening there. And then we, the high school principals felt very strongly they wanted to give it in 10th grade because they wanted a measure of what happened in algebra. And because that is an area where we have struggled in the past, they really wanted that measure that second year in a row, so that we would have that scale score and be able to look at growth, are we getting a year's worth of growth there, okay? The periodic assessments are shorter, they are available in all the subjects, but our recommendation would be to give those in math and reading, they take 45 minutes or less each. And we would recommend to give those at four, five, seven, and eight. They, those assessments actually give you the ability to look at an item analysis, so you can do some, some decision-making about what is it that's actually getting in students' way of understanding this content. The summative assessments do not provide that. They provide an overall report at the group level, student level, similar to what you would get on an ACT report. And they, the summatives will tell you, is the student exceeding readiness, ready, close to ready, or in need of support? The periodic assessments will allow us to actually look at what is it that the student's missing, okay? Yes?
A couple of things. First of all, what is a text complex, text complexity?
Okay. Text complexity is simply, when you, when you think about a text that a student reads, there are many things that go into making that text more complex. In the past, we always looked at word count, sentence structure, text complexity takes into account the content as well, and so it looks at, an example is that there are some books that we would not read until high school because of the content in them, but the readability a younger child could read. Text complexity takes both of those things into account. And so on that summative assessment, we would get a score for can students read very dense content that has a lot of underlying meaning, a lot of inferences needed to understand it, and a lot of background knowledge versus can they just read the words?
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes, and on the periodic, when you say it's 45 minutes each, is that 45 minutes for math and 45 minutes for reading?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And the recommendation would, that we, would be that we would give the periodic in the fall and the spring, because that would also allow us to look at growth over the year. We're currently giving an assessment in the fall and spring that takes longer than that 45 minutes, and so this would replace that MAP, okay? Any other questions on this before I go on to the next slide?
The 230 to 245 minutes is done all at one time then for English, math, reading, science, or is that broken up into smaller segments?
It actually can be broken up into smaller segments. We, they, we could test the English during English class, the math during math class, and it could be done over several days. It does not have to be done in one setting like an ACT. That's one of the benefits of this for younger students, because the ACT is all in one setting, this is not.
And because it is summative, it's at the end of the year?
Actually, we can choose to give it in the fall or the spring. Good question. And what we would recommend is giving it in the fall, because that is not a high testing time. So So, and that fall assessment would be, would give us that good measure of what had happened up to that point. So by giving it in the fall of 9th grade, I, we can look at what happened at 6, 7, 8. Okay? To try to balance, there were lots of discussion went into when's the appropriate time to give the assessment. Okay, time comparison. We're all worried about the amount of time that teachers have to teach, which is what teachers really need to be doing, teach. And so we want to limit the amount of time teachers are spending giving assessments, and we want to get the right information when students take assessments. So right now, we're giving that NWEA MAP, I said first and second grade, and I'm going to talk about that in just a minute, but at 3rd through 8. And the NWEA MAP, what I did here is I just looked at the average time, I pulled the average time that our students spent on the reading and the math this past fall at each grade level, and so that, that's what that 228 is. And then the ACT Aspire, you can see at grade 3, it's 230 minutes, so that's two additional minutes of testing. Okay? At grade 4, it, we would be giving those interims, not the summative, so the testing would decrease. So I just give you the, the net testing time there so that you could see. At 10th grade, we are adding the assessment. We have not given the assessment at 10th grade, but again, our principals felt like we really did want a measure at that level. It is a zero at 9th grade because we're currently giving the ACT Aspire there. Cost comparison. In 2016-17, we used Ames Web. We will step away from Ames Web at the high school level because we will use this instead. So that $7,475 we would save. The NWEA MAP, we have given that at grades 2 through 8 in reading and 1 through 8 in math in the past. Our recommendation, and the elementary principals feel very strongly about this, as did our elementary teachers, they want a math measure, and we have really strong reading measures with the B.A.S. that you adopted several years ago. They feel really good about reading, but they want that math measure. So they're recommending we keep the MAP at grades 1 and 2, because the ACT Aspire is not available there. Then the ACT Aspire summative, last year we gave it to 9th grade and Select 10, that was the cost. We would get a reduced cost because we have more students taking the assessment, so there would be the cost for next year. And then the interim, we've never used the interims before, but those would be at grades 4, 5, 7, and 8, and that's, that's the cost there. So total cost comparison, we, is, we actually would be spending less. So benefits and drawbacks, I just want to end with this. The benefits, there's strong alignment with, between this assessment and our BOE or KSD, and the KSD goals. It is a scaled assessment to bridge those transition years. So when kids are, you know, we said that, that 8, that middle school level is so important, that middle school study that said that, you know, that those years are very important in terms of college-career readiness. This will actually help us bridge those transition years. We would have the ability to review program strengths and weaknesses. We would have comparable data for grades 3 through 10. Right now, we have that 3 through 8, and then 9, and then nothing to compare it to. So it would give us that comparability. It would give us a strong measure of student growth over time. It would give us that measure of algebra if we do decide to do that at 10th grade, like we've recommended. And it would decrease the assessment time at multiple grade levels. Drawbacks, it is a new testing program to administer, and so there's some change there. We would have to learn how to read the reports. They're similar to what we've used, because most standardized assessments are reporting, you know, the same kinds of things. And there would be additional testing time at grade 10 if we, you know, if you do choose to go ahead and add this assessment at grade 10. Okay? So with that, I'm open to try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so what testing programs will be in place? State testing?
Okay. We would have the BAS testing, which is the individually administered, it's one-on-one assessment for reading. Okay? And we start that assessment in kindergarten, it goes up through 5th grade. Any student that is reading two or more grade levels below grade level in middle school and high school would continue to take that assessment. Okay? We would have the Kansas assessments. We would have the MAP, the NWEA MAP at grades 1 through 2. We would have, the ACT Aspire would be the rest of the, the norm-referenced assessment battery, and that would be at the grades that I have just recommended. We would have the classroom assessments that teachers always give. We do have some district common assessments that teachers have developed. As they're developing instructional units, we're trying to do one per unit that's common, that they can look at and compare data and have some professional learning conversations surrounding those. Those are teacher-developed, and, and change over time, depending on, you know, what teachers are wanting to find out about student learning. What am I missing?
AP exams?
Yeah, A, you know, individual students would take AP exams, individual students would take ACT exams. Look and see if there's anything else that... The KALPA, which is the alternate Kansas assessment for students that are second-language learners, but they take that instead. Oh, the RDA and phonics assessment, for our really little kids, before it's appropriate to give a reading comprehension assessment, which BAS is that. We do do a, a reading diagnostic assessment where we look at phonics skills and their ability to isolate phonemes so that, because that really is a strong predictor of a student's ability to learn to read. So with our really little kids, our kindergarteners and first, kindergartners and first graders, and until they've actually mastered those skills, we assess that. Fitness gram in PE. That's another one. Okay. Okay. I think that's it.
That's still enough, isn't it?
Well, it's plenty. And, and that goes to my point of, let's, let's get the information we need. That's why we're not recommending that summative at every year. And as a parent, I would love to have that summative at every year, but I, but I think that we can have the best of both worlds with those shorter interim assessments.
And should you find that that doesn't suffice, then move?
Then we would come back to you and say, we're not getting the information we need. We, and if parents respond really positively, then we would certainly come back to you and say, we need to reconsider this.
Andrea, did you have a question?
Yes.
Have you visited any others, with any other schools that are using ACT Aspire?
Many.
Okay. Our size, presumably?
McPherson is using ACT, we've talked to McPherson, and we've talked to Pratt, and then we've talked to other districts around that are using it as well. Most of them are using the summative, and the, the interims are relatively new. Some of them have done exactly what Carol was saying, you know, they started with the interims and then they've gone to just the summatives. Some of them have gone the other direction. But the, McPherson is probably the district that has used these the longest, and they actually are using the summative clear up, they are not using the interim assessments. What we're hearing is that it's important to train your teachers on, you know, how do you actually use the data? How does this fit in with that individual plan of study? You know, how, how do you frame those conversations with parents? So that, so that we're not alarmist, but we, okay, we have time to address this. What do we do to make sure that we're addressing this for your child and opening as many doors as we can?
Just as a point of information, does not McPherson require all of their graduating seniors to take the ACT? I, I think they went to that just a few years ago, actually.
I can't, I can't answer that with...
I'm just curious, because it would make sense if they had the ACT throughout, because they're so closely aligned.
Right. There, there, there is a preACT that some districts are using at 10th grade instead of the ACT Aspire, and the preACT mirrors the ACT. It looks more like the ACT, given in one setting. We felt like, as we looked at that, and that was, that was input that we got from several districts, so we looked into that, but we really did feel like we want that scaled score, 9, 10, at least for the time being.
Any additional questions or comments from, on the subject?
Thank you.
Seeing none, or, go ahead, and then we'll continue on our discussion agenda to course
And also, I believe you have a PowerPoint point on your desktop as well for this. I'm going to go ahead and pull it up.
Okay, this is shorter. Mr. Stevens and his...
And Eddie Creer.
Actually have a couple of courses that they would like to add as course offerings. We've had conversations with Central, they are supportive of these courses. They would be open to all students, similar to other courses that we would look at enrollment, and if enrollment would deem that we needed to have a section at both buildings, we would look at doing that. But the plan right now would be to offer these at South High. Okay? We do have time within the current allocation to offer these classes, and Mr. Stevens can speak more to specifics if you want to know more specifics beyond what I tell you. The engineering sound production, this would not be a career technical education course officially by the state definition, but it's a career technical education course. What we would do is actually create a course that would allow students, this would support that audiovisual production course. It would allow students to create music to overlay to video. You know, you see the awards when you're watching the award shows on sound editing, that's really what this would be. The kids would learn skills for sound mixing. They would, they would use the equipment that currently is available in our business rooms and that we're using in AP Theory, and they would have additional equipment when that audiovisual production room comes into play. But they would do some mixing for final production for video board as well. So if video was taken, then they would be the ones to overlay music, like would happen in, really in the industry. They would learn techniques for capturing sound, how to use mics effectively. This would be more focused on the sound piece than the, the video piece. And so it would be a nice complement for that other class. We are recommending a semester and having it open for grades 9 through 12. Go ahead.
And why isn't it a technical tech class?
There are certain classes that the state has identified as CTE classes where they've written competencies for them. They don't have anything that is this specific. The classes in that AV production pathway, in that particular pathway, are more of on the audiovisual side and not on the technical sound mixing side. And what they do is they, they identify high-demand, high-wage fields in the state of Kansas. And this particular, the, we actually did look to see if there were competencies related to this, and there are, but they're scattered through multiple classes, and so it wouldn't be something that would qualify as one of those CTE classes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
How many sections of this do you envision?
One. We're, we're thinking initially that it would be one section.
What equipment is needed and what would the cost be?
There, we currently have equipment that we're using with the AP physics class that's already there, and we have some programs that are available in our Mac Labs that we already have installed that we could use to teach this. The one thing that we would need to teach this is keyboard, and we can buy, we're, we're thinking five keyboards, $200 apiece, so $1,000, and that would be out of building budget.
These are musical keyboards or computer keyboards?
Musical keyboard.
Okay. And we have an opening and someone's scheduled to be able to teach this, is that correct?
We do. We have, we have room in Mr. Creer's schedule to where he could teach this class, and it would not add, it, it would be within the current allocation, so it wouldn't be at an additional cost or an overload.
And he's qualified?
He is. He is qualified. Okay, guitar. We have a very popular guitar program at both of our middle schools, as you know, and this would be the other semester, that first class was a semester, so this would fill the other semester and would give our kids the opportunity to continue what they've learned in, in middle school. This would, this class would be classical guitar. Students would actually learn the, the fine arts part of guitar with the music with it. They would learn chords and notes in first position, they would learn the improvisation skills. It would be very music literacy-based, and so it would be a nice, a nice growth out of that middle school program. Right now, at middle school, we have 55 students at Lakewood taking guitar, and we have 84 at South Middle School. So this, this is a class that we are hoping would get students interested and hooked in to that fine arts program, and maybe look at some of the other music courses that are available at the high school level.
And how many sections do you envision of this?
We're envisioning one of this as well.
With 84 coming up?
Well...
Sounds like a big class.
It would be very large. No, we, what we're thinking is that we will start with one class and see what interest is in, in the particular class and go from there. And Mr. Stevens can speak to, you know, what he's thinking on that. You know, students would have, at the 9th grade level, the, the class, their class schedules are pretty tight, they don't have a lot of electives. Those electives open up as they move on up, but I think we probably would have some 9th graders that are interested in taking this.
Yeah, so basically, by having, by having it rotated into the schedule, we're, we're going to work through the, the numbers the best we can, and that'll help kind of guide future decisions. Mr. Showman and I are going to be spending a lot of time this summer working on the master schedule between both high schools. It's kind of a tradition between both administrators to make sure that we're offering courses and, and, you know, sharing resources the best we can to leverage opportunities for kids. As I look at the schedule, you know, starting with 30 guitars and, and trying to balance that out the best we could, if we see that there's continued interest, that's, that's kind of a, another step that we would look at. There is room in the schedule. By rotating sound and engineer and guitar, again, we're able to, to use our resources better, but we're not having to add any allocations at all to the process, so...
How much do you see as cost in initiating this course?
Okay, so looking at guitars, and I, I always say there's the Lamborghini model, there's the Cadillac model, the sedan, and the Gremlin model, but there's a lot of different types of guitars that are out there. A quality acoustic guitar can be found in the range of $100. Interestingly enough, the cases can be the, the higher expense. I've been able to locate some guitars, and this is just a, you know, an amateur looking at a variety of different types of quality guitars, but in the, in the range of $100, some of them do include a bag case. You can also get a lower-quality case, but the case in some cases is a lot more expensive. For $100, I can get a guitar with a padded bag that comes with it. That would be a very basic instrument to start out with for acoustic guitar. So looking at that, we're, we're probably in the range of about $2,500 to $3,000, depending on what type of guitar we secure. And I'm looking at existing building funds to make sure that I can take care of that, and I will buy the, as many guitars that I feel are the most responsible with the quality that we have to be able to support that program. So, and I, I'm not going to ask for any additional funds in what I have in my own building budget to do.
And, and just kind of a, well, actually, two kind of general questions, and one of those you might be able to answer, Curtis, I don't know. Often when a course is built around a particular instructor, and that instructor leaves, the course disappears. Are we taking into account that possibility?
Well, what I, what I would tell you is, I, I can't predict the future on everything, and if I did, I, I would certainly tell you to cover your heart and guard your wallet. But in this instance, what, what I would say is that we, we have the capability to get training and staff development for any person that, that can work into, for the level that we're really working with. By the end of this course, you're, you're not going to be, you know, Jimi Hendrix, you're, you're going to have some intro level, but I think probably the, the strong suit of any teacher that be walking into this would be that they're helping students learn musical literacy, and that's something that transpires from vocal to band to orchestra. And there are ways to train folks that do not know how to do that, and one of them I looked at was a Wichita course. I, I played violin growing up, and there was a training method called... And there was a training method called the Sazuski Method. And I probably butchered the name, but the Sazuski Method was what I used. And it, it was an intro level type of methodology to teach you how to play before you could learn sight reading. And then eventually, the idea was it would entertain the notion of you learning how to read music-shaped notes. So there, there are multiple methods for this. What we're kind of viewing this class as is a way to get an entry point into that fine arts area that some students maybe wouldn't have tried otherwise. I, I was sitting in a mock interview not too long ago, in fact, last week. And one of our students who really goes the STEM pathway in a lot of their courses said, you know, one of the questions I asked is if you can go back to high school at the beginning and tell me what you would have done differently. What would that be and why? And the answer of that student was I would have become more involved in the fine arts program. And I think that this is a, this is a way, because it is a semester credit, for some students who maybe wouldn't be on that path to, to have access to the fine arts programming. And so whoever the, the instructor is, I kind of go with the approach that we hire the very best and the brightest that we can find. And this is a part of, of, of the duties. So we would try to secure a person who would have that ability. And if not, they would embrace a growth mindset to learn that ability.
Start by taking the course in the eighth grade.
Yeah, I want to enroll, I want to enroll in the, the South Middle and Lakewood program.
Exactly. Thank you, Curtis. And Lynn, just one general question about introduction of courses. Could you explain to the board our current process for bringing courses forward to us? What do we do? How does that work?
What happens is, on the, on the courses that I brought last time, those were all courses that kind of grew out of the bond projects and that visioning situation where we had community members around the table saying, you know, here's what is in demand in Salina. Here's what's in demand in Kansas. Let's develop some pathways related to these. So that's where the courses that we brought last time came from. Sometimes courses come when new requirements come from the state level, like the financial literacy course. There was a strong recommendation from the state that every district offer, offer a financial literacy course. And so we brought that forward to you. Sometimes courses come like this, where a teacher or a principal says, you know, what do you think about, we've got interest in this area from our students? What do you think about adding a class like this? And then we start to flesh it out a little bit. And if we determine that that is something to bring before you for discussion to see whether you think that it has merit for our students, that's what we do. But there is a course approval process that the principal fills out with the teachers. You know, here, here's a course description. Here would be the target audience of the course. Here are some of the key learnings that we would have as part of the course. They don't do the curriculum upfront because we want your approval first. But they do give me some background so that we can engage in some conversation about the viability of the course long-term. So we did, and we had conversations about the money. Where's the money coming from? I had some of the same concerns that you asked. And I, I pressed a little bit there on how does this fit in the schedule? How does it fit within the allocation?
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Any additional questions or discussion on this? If not seeing none, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our school board committee reports and upcoming dates of importance, which includes Saturday, February 18th. We have a chamber legislative meeting at the Chamber Annex at 8:30 a.m. Thursday, March 9th, we have our Stuart ribbon, ribbon cutting and open house at 6:30. And then that same evening at sunset, we'll have our ribbon cutting and open house there at 7:30. Saturday, March 18th is the Chamber Legislative Meeting at the Chamber Annex at 8:30 a.m. And Saturday, May 20th, we have another Chamber Legislative Meeting at the Chamber Annex at 8:30 a.m. as well. Brett, you want to start us off with our committee reports?
I have nothing to report.
I have several things if you'll kindly bear with me. On January 12 and 13, I attended the KSB advocacy conference and reception. And it was jointly sponsored by the USA, which is the United School Administrators of Kansas. They now have their offices in the KSB building. I was able to interact with Representative Dirks and Senator Hardy and Senator Berger during the day. And that evening, I also interacted with Senator, with Representative Swanson and Representative Heinemann. Very interesting conversations with all those people. And I asked both Senator Hardy and Senator Berger, since they were freshmen, what some of their first impressions were. And I got an earful. Their offices happened to be down, down the hall from the governor's office. And I'm wondering if they're targeted to be called into his office every once in a while. I don't know. But I wasn't able to contact Representative Johnson or Representative Clayes that day. Representative Clayes needed to be back in Salina to pick up his stepson after school. And that was a Thursday and then a long weekend. And Representative Johnson had a pre-scheduled conference with people in Linsburg who needed to visit with him about several issues. On January 19, I, along with several other, my fellow school board members, toured South and Central in their construction progress. And I was amazed and very impressed with how the principals and the director of Building and Grounds are working together and how they're gaining insights from the faculty and everything. And I think they're to be commended. January 31st, I had Lunch with Opportunity Now. That was a very good experience, watching those kids come out of their shell and everything. And guitars were very prevalent over there, too. A calendar committee met that evening, and I was privileged to be on that. The next day, I attended a tobacco coalition meeting. Then last Wednesday was the chamber banquet. And Carly Fiora really had a lot of good information to offer. And then the next day, I had a conference call for Smokey Hill. So thank you for enduring.
Yes, on the first Thursday in February, I attended the Heartland Early Education Policy Council. And you have all had a massive amount of information from them in your packet. So I don't need to go into any details.
I also attended Opportunity Now luncheon. And if you have an opportunity to partake in their food, it's absolutely delicious. The conversation was grand. And, and one of the students took us all on a tour to show us his artwork. And that was delightful. I attended SEF Executive Board, SEF Salina Education Board. I did attend the Play at Central, and I'm looking forward to the Play at South. And did you do Make a Difference Awards?
CKCIE meeting on January 18th. I wanted to mention a couple of things. One, an Award of Excellence, which has been presented to CKCIE from the President's Learning Services. This is the company that is providing speech and language services for over 400 of our special needs kids. Our CKCIE is one of only six educational organizations from across the country that was honored with this award for their leadership, their teamwork, and their outstanding progress in helping kids. So congratulations. Article in the journal also that you may have seen, CKCIE employee Sheila Mortimer, who provided training for first responders in this area in how to recognize and deal with people that have various disabilities, including autism disorders. And if you watch the news, you will know how important that is. Seventeen iPads were purchased for speech therapy with a $7,650 grant from the Earl Bane Foundation, which came through the Salina Education Foundation. This was received on December 20th. It was a great Christmas present. As we mentioned earlier, Rhonda Bird, the Assistant Director of CKCIE, is retiring. And you see Jeff is taking her place. Mr. Lowers is serving on a committee to set standards for a unified elementary certificate, grades K through six, that allows teachers, holders, to teach children with or without disabilities and exceptionalities. So the combination in the classroom be an interesting assignment, I'm sure. And one of the other things that I particularly enjoyed out of the CKCIE packet was a study on the statewide shortage of school psychologists and why they are leaving the field of Ed Psych. A number of reasons, low wages, high caseloads, and the Kansas political environment. I did participate in the Journal Spelling Bee, not as a speller. I think my spelling abilities wane every year. But as a judge, in fact, there were a number of retired teachers who served as judges. They were kind of overloaded with judges, I think. Also participated very gratefully in the mock interviews to prepare South High students for the Dane Hansen Scholarships. That's always a great experience. And along with others, enjoyed luncheon and great conversation at Opportunity Now.
I guess we were all pretty busy. Attended the Parks and Rec Advisory Board Meeting with Ms. Vosler. And that has become, I, I enjoy those meetings. They're, they're very informative. It kind of reminds us that, that every element has a purpose. So we had a good meeting. I then attended the Negotiations Workshop, sponsored by KSB, which was phenomenal. I learned quite a bit at that particular meeting. So I'm looking forward to negotiations time. I see that tongue in cheek. Then I actually made it to, I don't see her. Actually made it to the District Health Council meeting. Yes! Yes! I'm excited. And, and I really was, I was extremely surprised. I think because it was my first meeting, that was the biggest meeting that they've had. Yes. That was, we were all present and accounted for.
They knew you were coming.
They knew. It was, it was awesome. I was very excited. It was, it was very interesting. I looked forward to that one because I didn't really know what that entailed. That was a, a committee of PE teachers, nurses, principals. I mean, it was, it was phenomenal. It was very, it just reminds me that this district is so forward-thinking. We have so many opportunities. The, they're looking at the school health index, which they do every few, many years. And so it's, they're able to input it electronically this time, which they hadn't been. They hadn't been doing it by paper. We're in the, we're moving on up. And one of the things that was addressed was the tobacco policy. And that, it addressed it from the student standpoint, but they took it a step further. And it addresses adults. So any visitor, there is no one, no one who can be on or around the perimeter of a school, a USD 305 property and using any type of tobacco product. So that's electronic, that's vapor, that's, there's nothing. And there are cessation packets for the students. And they want to extend, extend that to the adults as well. So it's, it was a very, I've had really, really good meetings. And I attended the other things that, that my other board members have attended as well, so.
We'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Yes, Madam President. And again, worth the appreciation to all of you who were able to attend the board tours of both South and Central. Hope you had an opportunity to see firsthand the good work that's going on there. One of the things that, that we will have to kind of adjust since our, our tours of those facilities is that the east wing of South High will now not be finished until after spring break. And because, and now I know that Mr. Stevens is working diligently. And I know he is because he shared with me his spreadsheet. And his spreadsheet contains all the logistics involved and how they're going to get everyone moved into that new facility in a short amount of time. But it is going to be a little bit later, which also means that we're going to postpone the demolition of the first pod as well to about that time. Is that correct? Correct, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. So that's kind of where we are with South High. But thank you to, to all of you who attended those tours. I think it's always good that the board see firsthand the progress that's being, being made in all the construction. I did have the opportunity to reach to some preschool classes at Heartland. That's always enjoyable. And they kind of gave me the rounds. And so they brought me in. And then I went to three different classrooms and read about Jimmy the Flying Fish or something like that. But the kids seemed to thoroughly enjoy it, and I always have a blast doing that. Again, the board appreciation luncheon. I appreciate Opportunity Now doing that. And it's really nice because besides Opportunity Now doing that, I also do my soup with the soup about once a month. And Exceptional Caterers always caters that as well. And they do such a fabulous job. And the conversation's great, but the people will enjoy the, the food, I think, more than the conversation. So it's always enjoyable that we do that. Last week, I had the opportunity to, I had a meeting in, in Topeka. Attended the Early Childhood Symposium. Lydell Edgar, who's the State Director of Child Care Aware, had asked me to attend and invited me to sit with him at their table. It was very, very good program. We had the opportunity at that same time to sit and visit with Representative Johnson, as well as Representative Dirks, about all the important issues specific to early childhood education. And so that, that was an excellent program from there. I went to Council Supes, came back, also attended the Chamber Bank with that evening, which I also thought was a very good program. A number of you were in attendance. Also was fortunate, we had a number of students who were able to come as our guest as well. And I think it was good for our students to be able to see firsthand the quality of a speaker such as Ms. Fiorina. And, and the message itself was very, very good. And so I thought that was an excellent evening. Then the next day, headed back to Kansas City. Attended the Kansas Missouri Superintendent's Forum. Had an opportunity to basically, it's interesting because of all the superintendents I saw on Tuesday or went Thursday or Wednesday, turned around and saw again on Thursday and Friday. But then I headed back, and we stopped in Topeka on the way back and attended the state award ceremony for our Horizon Award winner, who's Ashley Winger. And that was also an outstanding program, the Topeka Capital Plaza Hotel. And you got some great pictures, her family was there, and, and Mr. Bowley, her principal, was there in support. And so that's always a, a kind of a neat program as well. And congratulations to Ms. Winger for outstanding work. State Legislature Report, Senate Bill 2270, was released last week. That's the new school finance formula. That's one of them. We understand that there's alternate formulas that are being proposed as well. This one is probably one that's more friendly to public education. It's one that is mirrors, mirrors very closely the old school finance formula, where it has all the different weights and measures in there. It does look at ramping up base state aid over three years, rather than doing it all at once to, to a figure of around $4,800 per student. So it, it's a, it's a good formula. Whether or not it's going to be approved and they have the votes to pass that is the one thing. The other thing is whether or not they have the dollars to fund it. So that's a real issue. And again, we have not yet heard from the Kansas Supreme Court in the Ganna decision. We're all kind of surprised that we haven't heard about that by now. You know, typically, we thought that we would have heard that in January before the legislature even convened. But we haven't yet heard anything. So I'm not sure where they are with that. At the same time that they introduced the, the school finance formula, they also introduced another bill for a rescission bill for 5% across-the-board budget cuts for all districts in the state. However, they couldn't muster enough votes to have the conversation last week. So that tells me that they have resistance in the legislature for any type of a, a, a cut for K-12 education, because many of those folks who are now new to the legislature ran on the fact that they didn't want to cut K-12. And so now they're trying to hold true to that. And so now they're having a difficult time even having the conversation. Had the opportunity last evening to go visit with the Saline County Republican Women. I had a nice visit with them, talked about everything USD 305, talked about our bond construction projects. Also visited with them about the state legislation and the things that are happening there. So I had a great conversation. And it's on my calendar and in the near future, within the next, I think, week or two, several weeks, to go visit with our Trusia. Trusia and have that same conversation with them. And so I appreciate the opportunity to always go out and meet with community groups and talk about USD 305 and, and give them all the information we can, not only locally, but what's happening at the state. And that's all I have.
And then we need executive session for personnel for how long?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to request executive session for personnel for 30 minutes, please.
Would anyone like to make that motion? Anne?
I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 6:40? Yeah, 6:38, let's say that. For 30 minutes, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. Because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed. And that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6:58?
Seven.
Seven.
Thirty minutes. Seven oh eight.
Oh, seven. Seven, what did I say? It's like, something like 7:08. Something like that.
7:08.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, I have a motion. Anybody like to second this?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-1.
I think one of those little clocks. One of the like little things that you use in first grade.
Exactly. I used to have.